There we go. Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners meeting for April the 20th, 2017. I know this is probably going to be a statement of the kiss of death, but we seem to have an abbreviated agenda tonight, and so I guess probably ought to go ahead and order pizza. We'll be here all night. I do know that we've got some special guests here on the front row with our coastal soccer team, and welcome, guys and coaches. We're glad to have you. And we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge, and if you'd stand with me and join Commissioner Stanbauer for the invocation followed by the pledge by Commissioner Murphy.
Power heads, to Heavenly Father, we stand before you this evening humble, asking for your blessing, your guidance, your strength, and your wisdom as we carry on the business of this community. And Lord, we ask that you watch over our first responders, those that stand at the gate, watch over us, protect us, keep us safe. And Lord, I'd like to ask a special prayer for our armed services, our troubled times and things we see going on in the world right now. Please reach out, guide, strengthen, and preserve the special young men and women who protect our liberties and make this great nation possible. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll enter our public comment period, and our first speaker tonight is Justin Henshaw. Mr. Henshaw, if you would come to the podium, state your name, address for the record.
My name is Justin Henshaw. I'm sorry, what, address?
Address.
I'm sorry. 129 Southern Oaks, St. Simon's Island, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
Ready? Okay. Thank you for allowing me the time to come together with you. Mr. Powell's not here, and I was told that to come here before you and to ask your permission to serve and have my business served on the beach. This is a direct reflection of an article that was actually published a few weeks ago. We're passing out a packet right now. Guess I should have a timer going here. First, a little bit about myself and our business. This is Fuse Frozen Yogurt. It's an original concept that was created on St. Simon's Island, the first store is at Longview. We have two other stores, one on Jekyll and the Village. It's my brainchild. I had the idea back in 2011, and it's done very well. We've been a patron of yours, the county, for a while now. And a little bit about me, I'm from St. Simon's Island, born and raised. I spent, graduated Glenn Academy '98, spent most of my twenties in the Marine Corps Infantry. I'm an Iraq and Afghanistan veteran, and spent six years. When I got back, I got my bachelor's degree from the College Coastal Georgia and decided the business was my strong suit. To refer to the article that was just coming out, also on a side note, I opened another business called Coasters. It was a food truck. I've been down this road before, and historically, the commission has never allowed, you know, public property unless it's very specific venues, like the hut at Coast Guard or the hut at Massengill. Historically, that's always been the case. I've been down this road before and had, I've got denied every time. So I was elated. I was excited by the article that was just published where, you know, Mr. Powell was interviewed and said the following, the most important things. The process is very straightforward, securing a business line, which we have, a license, a letter of approval from the DNR, which we have, it's in your packet. We received a letter of acknowledgement that the, what we plan to do, the cart that we plan to do is, does not affect the environment whatsoever. It's good to go from the DNR's perspective. Once I am satisfied, make a proposal to the Board of Commissioners, which is why I'm here. Someone approved for selling snow cones was just approved recently. I applaud them, and that's, that's why I was so excited when hopefully the opportunity has come up. Appearance before the county commissioner. Now, the biggest thing is, will then vote on whether to approve or reject the proposal. The county approves business ideas unless there is something unlawful or unsafe about the project, Powell says. Quote, "There is no intent to prevent anybody from utilizing our nice public areas. The driving concern is to make sure environment is protected." We've satisfied that. You all have it in your packets. The only one that you all don't have is this nice friend ring. Promise it's photoshopped. We didn't do it without your approval. This is kind of what we had in mind, okay? I've been wanting to do this for a long time, and that's why I was really excited about the article. It's self-contained. We make pre-made items, like pre-cups. We'll also do frozen pops and stuff of the like and have, you know, our staff members out there as well. We can conduct commerce out there completely self-contained with no impact to the environment. This particular cart here that we're going to have custom-built and made specifically for this charges overnight and keeps the temperature up to 12 hours, so there's no need for dry ice. There's no need for packaging of dry ice and all the debris that comes along with that, not only the logistics. So this is an awesome machine. It's going to probably be about a $5,000 investment, which I'm more than willing to do for this opportunity. Like I said, I've been in business for eight years now after the Marine Corps. This was the most exciting article that I've read in a long time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Julian Smith.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I am Julian Smith, otherwise known as Putty, and I live on St. Simon's Island. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Something ironic happened at the start of your last meeting, the one on April 6th. Only one citizen spoke during the public comment period. She ended her comments by reminding you that our planning process should be, quote, "open, transparent, and participatory," unquote. Immediately after she spoke, a commissioner moved to defer until May 4th the scheduled public hearing on an application to abandon all roads and drainage easements in a subdivision known as the Peninsula at Golden Isles. Although he did not give a reason for requesting that deferral, his motion was seconded and passed unanimously without discussion, which is why Rose came to the podium, admitted I was out of order, objected loudly and clearly to that deferral, and left the room to save Chief Dole the trouble of having to remove me. That was not the first time you have deferred or canceled a public meeting, nor was it the first time I have criticized you for doing so. I hope, but doubt, it will be the last time I have to speak out of honor. If you ever again find it necessary to defer, postpone, cancel, or cancel a public hearing, I suggest that the person who makes the motion to do so should explain his reasons and should apologize to any members of the public who have come to speak or to hear others speak and to hear your reactions to that public, at that public hearing. Why is it wrong to defer a scheduled public hearing without explaining your reason for doing so? Because it violates the public trust, because it wastes the time of citizens who come prepared to speak or to listen to others speak, because it violates a key objective found in the new strategic plan you recently adopted. Under the section dealing with planned and managed growth, you have promised to ensure the planning process promoting, promotes transparency and maximizes public input. You've also promised to, quote, "use the planning process as a means to educate and create a unified, mutually respectful vision for residents across all of Glenn County," unquote. Before you voted on April 6th to defer the public hearing, you did have an option, a choice. One of you could have spoken up and recommended that the public hearing should go forward that evening with the understanding that there would be no action taken on the application in the event the applicant, applicants were not present. Let me remind you that on April 6th, you voted to defer that public hearing until May 4th. I hope you will keep your word and actually schedule and hold a public hearing on that matter on that date. What if the applicants change their minds and withdraw their application? Then on May 4th, please give the public a chance to thank the applicants for withdrawing that flawed application. I want to thank those county commissioners who attended the island planning commission meeting on Tuesday evening, who heard those planning commissioners vote to hear public comments on an application that did not require, but should have required, a public hearing. I suggest to you that the fact the island planning's commission is in the process of establishing a formal public comment period at the start of each meeting is a clear sign that citizens in Glenn County want to be heard, and I'm not only, I'm not speaking about only those people who live on the island. I encourage you to change your rules in order to provide more opportunity for public comments at the start of each meeting, to drop the limitation of only four opportunities for a citizen to speak each year, and to drop the requirement to sign up before, to sign up between Monday evening, Monday morning, and Wednesday noon of the week of the meeting. It should be sufficient, I believe, to allow citizens to sign up in this room starting five or 10 minutes before the meeting is called to order and to provide at least half an hour of time for public comments if citizens chose, choose to use that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before we begin, let me just note here, and we'll do a proclamation later, but our Job Corps basketball team has won the national championship again, as you all know, and certainly our congratulations goes out to that group of folks, and Commissioner Booker, I think, is going to coordinate their being here at a future date, and we'll, we'll recognize them accordingly. All right, consent agenda.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to pull Item 2, Consent Agenda, off the consent this evening because the board has, really needs another opportunity to review and comment on the bylaws, after which time it will be placed back on the agenda for consideration, so I move to remove Item 2 from the consent agenda tonight.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Item 2, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda, general business and consent agenda finance, with the exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those wishing to approve the motion, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Congratulations, guys. All right, general business. Item number 29, consider accepting the proposal dated April 12th, 2017 by Denise Grabowski of Sembosity for planning support and consultation at a cost not to exceed $40,000 with funding provided by the FY '17 Community Development Department Planning Division Operating Budget. Ms. Thompson?
Good evening, Commission. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. You have a report in your information that is a memo from me outlining the continued need for some planning staffing support while we look to fill the vacancies within our department. One update, the funds were estimated when I prepared this memo in the current contract to make it through the end of this month. Due to the workload and including the detail and length of our meeting this week, we are almost at the very end of that contract, so I appreciate your consideration of extending this to allow for uninterrupted assistance. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask, I guess, questions or comment, all in one pile here. Gentlemen, we put $40,000 on top of what we've already spent. We're talking about $95,000 that we are considering spending here for these consulting services that we're getting, and, you know, I've got, I've got serious concerns about is the taxpayer getting the big bang for the buck here. We've got $95,000 sitting in front of us here to pay this one person who doesn't even live in Glenn County, and just today, all of y'all, just like myself, received an email from Ms. Thompson about the progress that had been made and the visits y'all made up to the job show and that we had gotten what several, hadn't actually got applications yet. We passed some applications out, haven't got anything back yet. Now, you know, with that said, you guys are talking about putting another 40 grand on top of what we've already spent, and according to what your email said today, we could very well have some, some hot prospects in here in just the next few weeks, and, you know, where are we going to be if we commit? I mean, is it, can we bail out of this thing if we have to? Or, I mean, suppose you hired some people, are we still going to pay out this amount of money to a consultant instead of training, trying to get the people trained that we hire? You know, and then, of course, my other concern is, you know, we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time and spending money hand over fist on, I'll give you a perfect example, that young lady sat in an IPC meeting Tuesday night, spent $150 an hour. I know the meeting was some five hours. That's 750 bucks she got for sitting in a chair over on the island Tuesday night, and if she was here all day, she got another $1,200 for the eight hours she was here before then. I just, I don't understand this kind of money being spent on one person, and do we get $1,950 worth of work out of one person on Tuesday? You know, I just can't see taking the taxpayers' money and just keep throwing it at this one single project here, and when, I mean, I feel like that we could certainly be applying that money to some other source or to some other, you know, expense that we have in Community Development Department. Granted, we have some real concerns there. We've got some positions that definitely need to be filled, but I just feel like as long as we, as long as we keep throwing money at this thing, there's no, in my mind, there's no urgency to get these positions filled. If you run out of, if you run out of, if the $40,000 was the end of the road, then, you know, you might have a little more pressure put on people to get some of these positions filled, get some people on the payroll. $95,000 is more than any three, any two planners and the planning manager make in a year, and we're spending that in how many short months? When, when did she come on?
November of 2016.
Yeah. So, folks, this is a lot of money, and to me, for what we're getting out of this thing, I mean, if we hired this woman for a full-time job, that'd be one thing, but that's not the case here. I just, I just can't feel like that, you know, this is wisely spent money and the people that are, I just, I don't see who's, who the people are that are benefiting from this, and you're spending taxpayers' dollars to do it. I mean, I understand community developers is, you know, getting the help, don't, don't get me wrong, but I just don't see why we're not applying that same energy, getting these jobs filled, instead of just passing the buck on to the next 30 days or the next 60 days and just keep throwing money at this thing. It's just crazy to me.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a staff, a full staff in your department?
We all know that she doesn't.
Ms. Thompson, Ms. Thompson, do you have a full staff of permanent, full-time employees, not counting Ms. Grabowski?
No, sir. The planning division is comprised of a planning manager, three planners, and administrative technician, and there's currently planning manager vacant and two planner positions vacant.
Okay. You, at this moment, you don't have a full staff to deal with planning issues?
No, sir.
And we have not had a full staff. We did not have a full staff before you arrived just a few months ago, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are you aware of the fact that we have received a lot of criticism about filling those positions?
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that.
Okay. And you've heard a lot about it since you arrived here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've heard a lot about it. What choices do we have, in your mind, what choices do we have to remedy that situation if, either on a temporary basis or a permanent basis? What are the choices at hand that we have to fill those slots? If you can answer that for me.
I can, sir. I'm presenting to you what I believe is the recommendation for the best way to handle the planning function supplement our office while we work to actively fill those positions. And Commissioner Coleman, you're correct. I'm working diligently. We did have that IPC meeting until 11:30 PM Tuesday, and I was back at the airport at 5:00 AM to fly up to Atlanta for the day to make those contacts and hand out that information, and I do believe it created some good leads. There is that process, as with any process. I want to make sure that we're building a quality, capable, professional department that's going to be with us and is going to keep us in good standing for a while to come. One answer would be to operate with the existing staff we can and do the best we can. I can tell you, all of our current staff go above and beyond and work beyond the 40 hours required to, to work as hard as they can to the work of the county. That would mean all areas of the department would have longer times, and there are certain legal requirements for review and consideration by the planning commission and by the Board of Commissioners for certain development.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
If you will, I appreciate that. But you are diligently working toward trying to find some full-time help?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you find that full-time help, and will we need Ms. Denise Grabowski?
No, sir.
If you find that full-time help, before we spend this $40,000, and I'm reading here, you know, "for planning support and consultation at a cost not to exceed." This is not a firm cost, a fixed cost that we may have to pay. This is up to and including $40,000 if it gets there, but it's not necessarily saying we're going to spend $40,000 because you may hire someone before then and we can, we can let her go.
Yes, sir, and I want to be completely transparent with both, with everyone on the board. With three vacancies, one hiring, if it's the planning division manager, that might be a little different than hiring one of those planner positions, but I would onboard and get up to speed as quickly as possible to start shifting the workload for Ms. Grabowski to the new employees as well as myself and the additional workload I've taken. So as soon as it was possible, I would recommend ending that contract for service.
Okay, that's, that's fine and good, Ms. Thompson, but let me also make a comment for the public to understand. We have a duty, we have a duty to respond to the needs of the, of the, of the citizens to the best of our ability, and we have an option here of trying to get through this period where we're understaffed, you know, and, and what I would, I would say is, is probably the only and best option we have if you can't hire full-time people at the moment, which is to go out and source that out on a contractual basis, and that's what this is about. We can argue about if we could find someone that's charging a little less, you know, we can argue about that all day long, but I think the community needs to know, the Board of Commissioners, I believe, with the vote tonight is going to affirm that we need somebody else in that office to help you get the job done that we expect you to get done when it comes to planning. And when you look at an hourly cost of someone that is on your payroll, that is part of your organization, you know, compare that with an hourly cost of a contractor who may be here for one week, maybe one month, and then that person may be out of work for the rest of the year, okay? Those costs are higher. Anybody who's not, does not understand the nature of, you know, consulting business, I don't care if it's in this work or something else. These folks, when they're not on your payroll, they got to find somebody else's payroll, and I'm not justifying whether that's the best rate we could get or not, but I'm depending on staff to bring to us what, you know, what I would believe in their minds is the best that we can do, and so the public needs to know, we have got to have people in that position because we, we have, we have been getting beat up, rightfully so, because we don't have staff into the levels that we need. And we're not going to have staff into the level we need with this, with this lady here at this price even, but, but I think the public needs to know, we're not just throwing money away. Now, I got a question for you. Are we just paying her? Is she just sitting in an office and we're just paying her? She just, just, you know, or is she actually doing some work?
Oh, no, sir. She is actively assisting us with thorough and accurate professional review of applications, and to your point, her proposal that's in your packet does reflect a more than 15% discount over her standard hourly rate that she was charging you all when she was providing some daily assistance that, in guidance that I now provide.
Okay, but, but it's not like we're just throwing money away.
Not in my opinion, no, sir.
Okay. Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Thompson, I read this report, and it says here that the funding for this is coming out of your operating budget. Is that correct?
Out of, yes, sir, out of the salary.
Right. So basically what we're doing is we are paying Ms. Grabowski with the funds we had already allocated for salaries for these individuals, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but can we pay, was it four individuals plus benefits, $90,000 a year and bring it in for that?
No, sir, we could not.
Okay, so we're actually not spending as much money as we had already budgeted to spend in this department. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. If you're looking at 40 hours, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's, and she only works, as Commissioner Browning points out, when we have work for her to do, correct?
Yes, sir. She is assigned specific cases from me and specific development projects and proposals to work on.
Okay. And this is going to take us through the fiscal year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Then we start to clock again with that, correct?
If necessary, yes, sir.
Yeah, no problem. I'm, I'm, that's what I'm asking. So it seems to me that based on the fact that we're not spending more money than we would if we had those people, we're really actually saving the county money if we can get the job done effectively and efficiently, because I've been regaled, matter of fact, I think it was maybe the last meeting or so, how critical it is, critical, that we get this stuff right and that this planning is done properly and is properly vetted and is properly put together and that it's done in a professional and timely and good manner, correct?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I don't see the problem.
Well, my observation has been in watching Ms. Grabowski, I don't think anyone could question her work ethic nor, nor her credentials, and so I think that she is our option right now, and I fully support your request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to consider accepting the proposal dated April 12th, 2017 by Denise Grabowski.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any, any discussion or any further questions for staff? All those in favor of accepting the proposal dated April 12th, 2017, signify by raising your right hand. We have five, six to one. All right, all those opposed, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item number 30, consider canceling the existing contract with underground excavating for the Oak Grove Island Causeway Pipe Rehabilitation Project. Authorizing staff to solicit bids for the work listed as Option 3 in the EMC report. Authorizing Staff to Solicit Bids for the Work List in as Option 3 in the EMC report and allocating $1,189,300 of SPOS V unallocated funds to SPOS V Drainage Rehabilitation and Improvements and Commit to this Project. Mr. Andrews?
Commissioner Paul Andrews, County Engineer. Item before you is a request to, that'll move a project forward that's been sitting for a little bit. The item in 2004 that came to the board was to perform work on these pipes that are failing under Oak Grove Causeway, based on the study that was done, or recommendations that were prepared by EMC Engineering. At the time, the item was to go with the least expensive and most likely the shortest life project. We bid that out. Costs came in, we awarded a contract. Due to permitting and, and issues on the site, the contractor, although we executed the contract, they never mobilized to get underway. This item requests that that, that contract be canceled, and we move forward with Option Number 3 in the EMC report, which anticipates a longer life cycle due to the, instead of repairing what, what is out there is we're going to, with this item, we'll be pulling in a new continuous pipe inside the concrete pipes that are out there. What's failing is the joints where the concrete pipes come together. The joints are separating. Soil's moving in. Shoulders are failing. By lining them with a continuous pipe, it'll take that out of the mix. The concrete pipes, we've been in them, they still are structurally sound, but with the failing joints is they're, the soil around them is, is migrating into it. So this option will have a longer life cycle of preventing that and dealing with the same end wall issues that all the other options we're dealing with.
All right. Questions for staff?
Mr. Andrews, am I correct? I believe you said this in the finance meeting. Several years ago, we did a Band-Aid repair to this situation. We're trying to just kind of limp along, or several years ago?
We, we've been out there a couple of times fixing this.
Right. And this is more of a permanent fix for this situation?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is the drainage that goes to the main road that goes in Oak Grove Island?
This is the, the main, the main road on the causeway going out of Oak Grove Island. There's two locations, they each have double pipes.
Yeah.
You can see the circles, but it's...
Point being, if it washes out, we're going to have a real issue with...
That, that is correct. Failure of the road would not be good for residents of Oak Grove.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul, if you...
Go ahead.
Yeah. If, if you would, I can tell you a little bit about those pipes since I put those in.
Please do. Please do.
Yeah.
That's why we're going to be working now.
Pizza, pizza, back, back before the turn of the century, Mike.
Is this the, where the tide goes and comes?
Yeah.
That's where y'all talking?
Yeah.
Is, is one of them just tied and the other one's drainage?
No, 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 they're both tied. Just, just to give you a quick history, when that land was owned by the Pulp Land Company, and that was just marsh across there, and they wanted to get over there and take the trees off the island, they just hauled a bunch of sludge and stuff and started backfilling. And when they got to these two creeks, there's two creeks there, and they put in some concrete cover pipes and just went on, and they never did build a standard to standard road. This is just something they put in to get log trucks over there. And when Mr. Scarpalazza's came some years ago and developed that island, he actually came to the Board of Commissioners and asked them to pave that road, okay? Well, it never was up to standard, and those old pipes are in there. The road got paved, and I got a call from Mr. Jim Bruner one day and went out there and looked at the road, really, this is when I was in construction work, and, and what happened? Those pipes are separated. Well, the tide goes. When the tide gets high, it's, it's, it's going through there, it's going through there fairly forcefully. And when you have those pipes come apart, that water's trying to go out of those joints in all directions, even if it's on the road, and it starts washing the road bed out. Anyhow, they were about to lose the road bed. So we went in, and the mistake they made at that time was just cut the road open, take those old pipes out, and put more concrete pipe in, that were going to come apart too. Those things don't stay. And, and that's why you have a problem, and they should have put in, what you're talking about doing is taking HDPE pipe, a single length, and run it through those pipes from one end to the other, and you won't have that joint failure again. That's the way they should have went back then. I, I tried to talk to, but they had a very little bit, had very little bit of money back, back in those days. But if you don't do this, you're going to have joint failure again, and if that road washes out, you're not, if you ever lose one of those, that you will not get that road put back together no time quick, I can tell you. And you're going to have a problem with people living on that island that can't get on and get off. So this is, this, this, this will eliminate that for a long time.
So just to clarify, should I vote yes?
Yes, you should. Yes, yes.
One, one more thing, Paul, I forgot to bring up. We'd also discussed this as well. The existing contract with underground excavating, they're good with canceling this, I believe you said, because there were some DNR permitting issues and some other issues with what they were trying to do, so they...
They're good with...
They elected the contract away if we elected... Okay. Cool.
Mr. Murphy?
He's through.
Oh, you?
He was just making remarks.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was...
I got lost in his comment.
Okay. Okay. Well, all this is way above my pay grade, but I'm sure that it's going to be done, going to be done well. Makes sense what you're talking about doing, and I guess it'll be a total, not an interruption of traffic at all.
With this?
Yeah.
There'd be some minor shoulder, probably some slowing down traffic.
Sure.
And I'm sure some very minor lane closures, but...
Yeah. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the existing contract with underground excavating for the Oak Grove Island Causeway Pipe Rehabilitation Project and authorize staff to solicit bids for the work list under Option 3 of the EMC report and allocate $1.189 million, $300,000 to the SPOS, of the SPOS V unallocated funds to SPOS V Drainage Rehabilitation and Improvements and commit to do this project.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you. And I know the folks at Oak Grove appreciate it too. That's right. I'm going to cancel the pizzas. This, this is a world record. Get a motion to John?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
If we...
We don't have anything for executive session.
If we could...